There goes, there goes. Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome y'all to the August 1st, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We have lots of guests with us today, and we're glad to see y'all. At this time, I'd like to welcome up for our invocation, one of our Boy Scouts, Scout Jack Larson. And Jack, if you'll come up, and you're going to lead us in our invocation. And then our pledges, we have six Boy Scouts from, uh, Boy Scouts of America. So we have our first one, and they're going to lead us in our pledges, which is great. We're glad to have y'all here, and the parents, too. So we've got Joshua Bishop, Jacob Craig, Michael Craig, Jody McMahon, Lincoln Myers, and Jack Larson. So if y'all will, everybody, please stand, and remind everybody to turn off your cell phones. All right, Jack, it's all yours. Let's.
Please join me in the manner to which you are accustomed. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for our great country and for the founding fathers who created the United States of America to be a place that strives to provide us all the opportunity to reach our full potential. We are blessed that the young and old are able to participate in the decision-making through our representative democracy. We pray for the protection of those citizens in Ukraine and that they may have the same opportunities that we all enjoy in America. May we never take our freedoms for granted. Please keep our first responders safe as they help others in their times of need. Help us to see who, those who, that are hurting, and use us as your instruments for peace so that we may assist them. Please give our leaders gathered here today wisdom as they make decisions regarding our communities. Thank you for scouting and the wonderful opportunities that it provides me, me and my friends, like being here today. We pray for the moms and dads and other caregivers who are helping children prepare for school. For me, I share all of these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Wow, very good. All right, little scouts, if y'all will come right up here. Perfect. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever.
Now, our state flag, guys.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Let's give our scouts a big hand. Well, thank you. And Jack, what a lovely prayer. I've heard lots of invocations in here.
Yep.
That was a, that was a, wasn't it, Mark? That was. So. We don't have anyone registered for Item 1, and so out of courtesy to our Tax Assessor Collector, who is super busy this time of year, we're going to call our Tax Assessor Collector, Michelle French, forward. She's busy working on our tax roll, tax calculations, and so forth. So we're going to go ahead and, um, open up, well, I guess we'll just go ahead and just open up one at a time. Let's go ahead and do 7A, which is accept the submission of the appraisal roll for Denton County for tax year 2023 from the Tax Assessor Collector. Mrs. French, good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you so much for moving me up. Um, my team and I are working. My team is just amazing. Uh, calculations are not quite as, as easy as they used to be. Takes a little bit longer, a little bit more steps, and so we're, we're smack dab in the middle of it. So thank you very much for, for extending me the courtesy. So we're going to jump right into this, and what we're going to do is I am presenting the 2023 certified appraisal roll values. And what I'll do is I'll go straight across. We'll go 2022 and 2023, so you can see the comparison between each year. So the total appraised value for 2022 was 172 billion, 757 million, 546,890. For 2023, the total appraised value is 214 billion, 62 million, 17,419. Our total assessed value for 2022 is 163 billion, 786 million, 608,226. And for 2023, it is 195 billion, 980 million, 752,911. Our total net taxable value, and this is before the tax limitation, the, the freeze, for 2022 is 146 billion, 706 million, 278,154. And for 2023, it was 174 billion, 464 million, 46,944. And then our total taxable value after the tax limitation is employed. For 2022, it was 131 billion, 979 million, 917,490. And for 2023 is 158 billion, 65 million, 814,751. Our total new improvements for last year, 2022, was 4 billion, 980 million, 153,636. For this year, it is 9 billion, 192 million, 481,519. Our certified collection rate is 100% and property value under protest. And keep in mind, this is lower value used, which is the, um, which is a, a means to be able to say if you have the appraisal district's rendition of value and the property owner's rendition of value that's under protest, this is the lower value, the property owners. So that if something were to occur where every single protest came in at the, at the property owner's value, this is what we're looking at. Last year, it was 2 billion, 272 million, 554,967. And this year, it is 2 billion, 146 million, 190,970. And I just also wanted to say, the appraisal district has just done a phenomenal job. Um, Stacy and I were just commenting last week that we don't remember the last time that, uh, the appraisal district certified on July 25th at, what was it, I think, 98%.
Right.
Um, that is just, kudos to them. That is phenomenal. So we're, we're super happy for them and super happy for all of our property owners. Okay, so next, um, we're going to go to the excess debt. This is something that's required now, where, um, certi- certify, certification, if I can get it out, certification of anticipated collection rate, which we just did, which is 100%, and our excess debt collection. And, um, our certified excess debt collections, which is the amount of collections in debt taxes over and above what was reported to be needed. And this comes in as a result of penalties and interest, um, as you have, uh, protests that are settled and, and various things that are, are adjusted to the roll, and then those, uh, debt taxes are collected. That's what this is representative. That was 7,251,525. And then for the rate, which everyone's always very interested in, so you have a report there. Um, and I'm just going to kind of go down, go down this as well. Last year's adopted tax rate was .217543, which gave an adjusted 2022 total levy of 280 million, 356,660. The adjusted taxable value for 2023 is 147 billion, 957 million, 151,290. And that's the adjusted taxable value, meaning that is the taxable value after we make the adjustments that are required by law to determine what the tax rate should be or calculate it out to be. So as a result of that, the 2023 no new revenue tax rate is .189485. The adjusted 2022, um, 2020, let me, let me back up. The, for the 2023 voter approval tax rate, um, we have an adjusted 2022 levy calculating for the no new revenue M and O rate, which is 215 million, 195,293, which again is at the adjusted taxable value for 2023 of the 147 billion, 957 million, 151,290. That gives us a no new revenue operating rate, um, of .145444. Then we have the voter approval tax rate, which is the voter approval maintenance and operations tax rate, which is .150534. Our debt rate is calculated out to be .043119. That gives us a total voter approval rate before we adjust for the unused increment rate of .193653. Once you add in the unused increment rate of .000226, um, that gives us a voter approval rate of .193879. So as a result, our no new revenue rate is .189485. Our voter approval rate is .193879.
Perfect. All right, members, do you have questions? We'll go ahead and, uh, Mrs. French. All right, so let's go to, uh, let's go to, we're, we're in 7A, so let's, do we have a motion to accept this?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So you next, okay? So, and we just did 7B as well, the note, the, the, she went over the tax rates with us. So we'll go ahead and move a motion for approval on 7B.
Move to approve.
Again, motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So you next to 7C is your action for 7C.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So you, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
All right, thank you. All right. Next, let's go to Item 3A. And, and if our Boy Scouts would come forward and Megan, if you'll come forward, we have a... 3A is approval of a resolution recognizing the spring 2023 Denton County Scouts BSA Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge Program and any appropriate action. This is a function of our Office of History and Culture. If you'll go ahead and give a quick overview, that'd be great.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Um, first, I want to introduce really quick our Merit Badge counselors. Um, we had, um, Jim Garner here and Jim McLaren. We are both, they're both volunteers of the Office of History and Culture and are both Eagle Scouts, so we were really privileged to have them be Merit Badge counselors.
They're in good hands, yes.
Yes, and then of course, um, Kelsey Gistel, who, um, also works for the Office of History and Culture, and my husband, Josh Joblin, was also a Merit Badge counselor, but he couldn't make it today.
All right.
Um, but we're so pleased to be here today with our first class of Boy Scouts for our Merit Badge program. Um, these scouts put in a lot of work over the last three months. They attended, uh, three scheduled meetings at the Courthouse on the Square in the historic courtroom, um, where they had the opportunity to learn about what citizenship and community mean, especially, um, when it comes to Denton County, what it, a county community is. They mapped out important community locations and services in the county. They did attend a virtual session of Commissioners' Court, so they've been here before, but not here here. So we're glad they're here today. Um, they also had the opportunity to interview Commissioner Ryan Williams, who graciously volunteered one of his Saturdays to come out and meet with the Boy Scouts. Um, so it was a really great opportunity for them. Um, they also volunteered at least eight hours of their time with nonprofits within Denton County. And I say at least because they were only required to do eight hours, but many of them did, um, more than that. So they, yeah, they effectively definitely gave back to their, to our county community. And for their final project, they had to give a presentation to Merit Badge counselors, um, which they all did, talking about citizenship and community, um, within Denton County. Um, so real quick, I just want to recognize each of them. We had two that couldn't make it today. But, um, Joshua Bishop. And, uh, Jacob and Michael Craig couldn't make it. Um, Jack Larson, which who did an excellent job on our invocation. Uh, Cody McMahon. And, uh, Lincoln Myers. And, um, this, of course, is our first class, and we're going to have, um, uh, we're hoping to have two classes each year. Our next one is in the fall and starts here in just a couple of weeks, so.
Perfect, perfect. That is great. Well, I'm going to read this, uh, this proclamation that we have. This is a resolution recognizing the spring 2023 Denton County Scouts BSA Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge Program. And whereas the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge Program sponsored by the Denton County Office of History and Culture is for those participating in Scouts BSA from across Denton County who have met three times at the Courthouse on the Square to learn about citizenship and community in Denton County. Whereas to earn this badge, scouts mapped out important community locations and services in Denton County, outlined the local county government, attended a session of Commissioners' Court, interviewed Commissioner Ryan Williams, gave eight hours of their time to volunteering for nonprofits, and presented a final presentation on citizenship and community in Denton County to their Merit Badge counselors. And whereas the following scouts earned their citizenship in the community merit badge with the Denton County Office of History and Culture in the spring of 2023, Joshua Bishop, Craig, uh, Jacob Craig, Michael Craig, Jack Larson, Cody McMahon, and Lincoln Myers. And whereas these scouts have demonstrated important skills in research, communication, community activism, and public speaking, and now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby recognize these Denton County Scouts for their accomplishment and completing the citizenship, citizenship in the community merit badge with our Office of Denton County History and Culture in the spring of 2023, done in open court this, the first day of August 2023 upon a motion made by Commissioner Williams, second by the Chair. Well, I just want to say congratulations, um, to y'all, uh, checking off this merit badge, and I hope it was fun and rewarding, and you learned a lot about Denton County. And I hope you, you keep going with your volunteerism. Um, we, volunteering, volunteering at all ages is an important, is an important function of, of our community and being a good citizen. I just want to, hopefully that will inspire you to, uh, continue that practice throughout your, throughout your life. And I want to thank our Merit Badge counselors. Thank y'all for all that you do for the museum, and thank y'all for instilling, uh, a sense of community in our, in our scouts. And moms and dads and guardians or whoever's here, thank y'all for, for having the, the boys be involved in Scouts. It's, uh, I have two Eagle Scouts of my own, and I would tell you, I'm very pleased that they, uh, that they, um, that they pursued scouting. It was a, it's a worthy endeavor. Any comments from the court? All right.
Judge, just real quick, Judge, I'm sorry.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I, I just want to say, it was a wonderful Saturday. I had a great time. Uh, these young men asked some really good questions. Uh, you never know what you're going to get, right? Um, and we had, we had a wonderful time, but they all participated very well, and, and I really enjoyed it. You could tell they did some, uh, uh, some, did some background, uh, to get some of their questions. So, uh, it was, it was really good. We had a wonderful time, so congratulations, gentlemen. And thank you, guys, for helping.
And it's been a long time, but I remember when I got mine, and it's, I'm glad that we have this program. I think it's a great program, and, and it is good to be in the Scouts.
That's very great.
Thank you, Judge.
So you've seen the Courthouse on the Square in this courthouse, and I hope you don't see the other courthouse. That's the one I want you to stay out of, okay? You're, you're, stay out of that one, all right? So I'm going to be watching, uh, the dockets over there, so. All right, so we have a motion to second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries your name. So congratulations. And don't feel obligated to stay.
Yeah, no.
Super boy.
It's summertime.
Leave while you can.
Yeah, that's right.
There's, there's not a demerit.
Exactly.
We won't, we won't take it back. We won't take it back. That kid did such a nice job on the prayer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bobby, can y'all cut me back on, please?
You're on.
No, I mean the computer.
Oh, uh-oh. All right, David, we'll, uh, do y'all next. So let's go to Item 3B, which is a presentation of the Denton County Alternative Dispute Resolution Program. This is the D cap quarterly reports for the first through the third quarters from October the 22nd through June 2023. And David, good morning. Good, good to see you, sir.
After the tax assessor, my numbers aren't going to be... And then I'm going to tell you about volunteering, and you brought up the Boy Scouts in front of us here, so I ain't got nothing. So if, if you got some questions, I'll answer.
Is that, is that mic still on, David?
I'm sorry. He turned it on.
Okay, good, good. All right, members, do y'all have any questions about our, our, um, Denton County Alternative Dispute Resolution Program? Is anyone? County Alternative Dispute Resolution Program? Does anyone have any questions?
No, sir.
Did you have any?
Like I said, I ain't got nothing.
All right.
Thank you.
Perfect, okay, very good. All right, do we have a motion for approval to accept the report? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, David.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for what y'all do.
Yeah.
Make sure that is. Okay. Let me go back and make sure there's any other items we need to kind of move around here. I think we were good. All right, let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda, or have a motion to accept it as presented?
To approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of the order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of the intra-departmental transfers. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budgetman request 101750 for the 211th District Court to transfer $3,750 from various line items to administrative equipment. The funding is needed to replace chairs in the jury deliberation room. Item two E is approval of budgetman request 101760 for the SAMSA Treatment Drug Court Veterans Court grant to transfer $33,256 from contract services to various lines. The transfers needed to reallocation funds for counseling, drug testing, monitoring to fully utilize all existing grant funds. Item two F is approval of budgetman request 101810 for juvenile post-adjudication to transfer $1,500 from educational supplies events to inmate clothing, pardon me, to cover the cost of inmate clothing for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item two G is approval of budgetman request 101820 for juvenile probation to transfer $74,000 from institutional care to juvenile detention food for juveniles, and $26,000 to post-adjudication food for juveniles, for a total transfer of $100,000 to cover the cost of food for the remainder of the fiscal year and any appropriate action. We've already done three A and B. Let's go to item five A, is approval of the bill report payments from CSUD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, and we are pulling this item to be rescheduled at a future time per Frank Phillips, our elections administrator. Next, let's go to item seven D, approval of budgetman request 101770 for the Texas Indigent Defense Commission grant to increase revenues and allocate expenditures in the amount of $29,906 and transfer $20,901 within the grant budget for a total amount of $50,807 and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E, approval of budgetman request 101790 for the Technology Services Department to transfer $100,000 from information security technology software services to countywide technology technology equipment to cover the cost of ruggedized computer equipment utilized by law enforcement.
Need approval?
Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budgetman request 101800 for human resources to transfer $20,000 from county communications recruitment advertisements and $960 from non-departmental awards programs to non-departmental employee programs for a total amount of $20,960 to cover the cost of employee appreciation programs and any appropriate action. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez, good morning, sir.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have two new hires in the district clerk, one promotion in private court number one, four new hires in the sheriff's office, two of those are detention officer ones. We have two lateral transfers in the sheriff's office, one promotion in the sheriff's office, and two promotions in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, good. That's especially good news about our detention officers. Thank you, sir. Next is thirteen A, approval of United Way of Denton County Incorporated Fund Request to Fulfill Allocation of American Rescue Plan for Housing Assistance, Nonprofit Assistance, and Food Assistance Due to COVID-19 and Any Appropriate Action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval of an amendment to the fiscal year 2022-2023 inter-local cooperation agreements for ambulance and fire protection services between Denton County, Texas and Denton County ESD number one, where Denton County will compensate Denton County ESD number one a one-time supplement of $277,000 from auto line item 541080, ARPA interest earnings expense, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Chair will second. Any discussion?
You'd like to just say something?
Yes, go right ahead.
So, and thanks for our folks attending. This one's a hard one to swallow, because it's just an additional payment, which actually is more than we've paid entirely in the last couple of years, and it's tough. And now, I know that you guys had some tough things to deal with, but I'm especially concerned about this becoming a recurring theme, because it won't be a recurring theme on me approving in the future.
Sure.
So.
Understood, and I think, first of all, thank you for the consideration, and we agree with you. When we discovered this budget gap this year, it started out at $2.3 million. Through budget cuts and retirement reduction costs, we got it down to 1.9. And then through grants, through Lantana at $300,000, North Lake of $100,000, Argyle of $56,000, right? Copper Canyon 25 and Bartonville at 20. We were able to get the gap down to this $277. With this, we have every anticipation, and we got a million-dollar line of credit to assist, and we anticipate that this will fill the gap and that we will be whole this year. And then moving forward for next year, we do not anticipate coming back. We are hoping to be successful in our elections in November, in which case in 2025, when those will kick in, we assume that we will be sustainable for the foreseeable future, and this will never obviously be an instance again. So, thank you for your consideration, and it's hard for us to come asking everybody, but we had to do it to get through this year, but we are more than cautiously optimistic that we see light at the end of the tunnel, and we don't hear a whistle.
And I appreciate your question. Could I point out the big, big, deep hole that this group was in, not through any fault of their own, but through the fault of a previous board and a previous fire chief. And they have worked diligently. I've watched, I've been at most of their meetings, to see them do everything possible. And what I really appreciate, they didn't come to us first. They went to their member cities and entities and asked for help and got it. And so, I am proud of them for doing that, and yes, it's a big number, Commissioner, but it's not as big as it was. And I just want to congratulate y'all. I think you've done an amazing job to put this train back on the tracks, and that track is heading in the right direction. There's no freight train coming towards you. So, we appreciate, so I appreciate personally what y'all have done, and I'm confident you'll have a victory in the November election to bring Lantana in at the appropriate rate and be able to provide full services there and to your other communities. So, thank you. And Commissioner, I appreciate your vote.
No, and I want to make a statement that it's fully support the effort in our first responders. It's just, it's a tough thing as a county, us coming in in kind of a bailout scheme, right? And we've talked, the chief and I, and I have full faith in what you're doing, but I do think that in the future, we have to make the right and sometimes hard decisions to make sure that this doesn't happen. Whether the elections are approved or not, all those things have to, we have to make some hard decisions to make sure that we're making this work.
And, you know, Kevin, you are absolutely right, but as Diane said, unfortunately, they were thrown in a position that they were not looking forward to and having to dig themselves out. And I appreciate the fact that you've gotten in there and worked and did go to the member cities and ask for the money before you came to the county. So, it is a little bit of a heartburn, but we have to take those sometimes, and so I appreciate all the effort that you've given to help the cities and the citizens that really need this fire protection. So, thank you.
Judge?
Go right ahead, yes.
One question I have real quick, and I agree with everybody up here, obviously. Insurance. Is the insurance going to cover the theft? Usually you have some kind of insurance for that, because that's basically what it was. This guy stole.
We do have some, two claims. One of them is, it's not going to be as much as we thought. It's going to be about $20,000. The bigger one is a little bit more of a long shot. We do have some other claims we're looking at. As the evidence comes forward, the former chief did plead guilty, so we're using that plea of guilt in that. That's really, hadn't been sentenced yet, but that we are looking to get that. So, a lot of things could come into play, whether do we get any money back from the sentencing?
Yeah.
Is there insurance we might get? But those are all question marks, and if we get those, that will just keep us from using our line of credit. We did get an extension of a billion-dollar line of credit that we will be using as needed, but if we can get those extra things, it will keep us from having to pay back the line of credit as much. So, but yes, there is claims, there are existing claims that are open, they're being investigated. We have to provide proof of loss, is that's the word they use, and so we've submitted for one, we're about to submit for the other, and so we hope to get those, but they're kind of a long shot. One of them is a management liability claim, which is typically meant for when you get sued, whereas if the firefighter had sued us, we're actually trying to settle this out of court, and we're trying to do it that, providing that evidence to them. So, we've completed one of the forensic audits, which was just solely on the retirement and overtime issue, and that's where, that's where we're going to use that as part of the evidence for the management liability claim. So, if we get any of those back, that's great, but that's one of those question marks when you're trying to close a deficit on your budget that's quickly coming up to the end of, you know, end of September. Can't rely on that. When's that going to get here? And so, all these measures we've taken over the last seven months is to create that, fill that gap for the short term so we can get past this year. And so, if we get those things, that'll benefit us next year, but they're kind of a long shot. We don't know how much we'll get. Of course, we've incurred fees, attorneys and legal fees and accounting and auditing fees that we're absorbing as well. So, it's been a journey, but I think this is the final piece that'll get us, make us whole for this year.
Commissioner Edmondson, oh, go ahead.
No, I said appreciate it, Chief. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to point out something, and I think it's very important. We're talking about first responders here, guys who run, and gals who run to the fires, not away from it, and we have not lost a single fireman, not a one during this. They met with their leadership, with some of the county leadership. They knew that we were trying our best to make sure that they didn't miss a paycheck and that their retirement was restored. And I don't think those are unreasonable requests. We have done that thanks to this team working their butts off to make things come together and happen. So, y'all, I appreciate your support of this. I really do, and I can't thank you all enough. Sheldon, I've told you several times, I think you're a godsend. Let me just tell them a quick story. Sheldon did not support me for reelection. Now, I still don't know why, but he didn't, but I remembered Sheldon, when this came up, the fact that he had the same kind of experience from California, and as it turns out nationally. So, I called him. He took my call, and he jumped in immediately, said, yes, I'll help. No, I don't need to be paid. And I just thank you for that. It really, without you and your leadership, I think it'd been very difficult, if not impossible, for us to come out to the happy ending that we're just about to see. So, thank you all so much, and thanks to my fellow commissioners for this support.
Thank you for those kind of words, but I'd like to personally, on behalf of the board and the community, thank you, Commissioner Edmondson, Commissioner Mitchell, Judge Eads, and the county administrator for all the work and all the meetings and helping us entangle this, helping us understand this, helping understand our options, and working with us as we work with all the communities to keep the fire protection and EMS services intact. That was goal number one. That's mission accomplished, and I'm confident we're going to be going forward. So, thank you.
Well, I'll wrap up here. Everybody's had an opportunity to speak, so I just want to say, kind of echo some of those comments, but just officially say, the ESD board and the staff there in our Denton County ESD one has my full faith and confidence moving forward. I think the action the court's taking today is a kind of a final action on some of the cleanup that's had to take place from an action for the Commissioners Court from the county. And so, we have repopulated the board, and we've been very supportive of all y'all's efforts. Chief, thank you for coming. You came on here to this new position at a very difficult time during the time of transition, when the organization was under great scrutiny, and rightfully so. And so, I want to thank you for continuing your efforts to relocate here and to take this job and bring the organization to a new level. And Sheldon, I echo Commissioner Edmondson's comments. Thank you. You've been a real godsend. I've known you and your sweet bride since y'all moved to town, and y'all have been, y'all both jumped in with, talking about those Boy Scouts this morning, the volunteerism, y'all both have, both jumped in and helped in a variety of things, and this is your latest endeavor. So, thank you for bringing your professionalism. This is what he kind of does for a living back in California and other places, and so thank you for volunteering your skill set here. And Diane, I want to thank you for all your efforts and leadership on this, since last November. And we've been on the phone a lot about this, haven't we? And Jody, thank you for all your efforts as well. So, I really, this may be, you know, it's a financial commitment and a financial investment on behalf of the county today, but I do believe that this is kind of a final action as far as wrapping up some of the unpleasantness from last year. So, anyway, I'm excited to move forward, and we do have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, thank you. Approval of a change order number two to the software license and services agreement with Mark 43 Incorporated for the Computer Aided Dispatch CAD and Records Management System, as recommended by Tracy Murphy, Denton County Sheriff, and Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer, and any appropriate action?
I made approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of a change of name agreement between Denton County, Texas and Geotech Engineering LLC, formerly DNS Engineering Labs LLC, which became effective on June the 1st, 2023. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval of supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement between Denton County, Texas, and Lena Ramey and Associates, LTRA, for the FM 1385 project from US 380 to FM 455 in the amount of $61,625 for a total revised contract amount of $7,760,623, with funding to come from FM 1385 Judge Trip 22, auto line, 8974239020, and any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Williams. The chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yes, I'm very excited about, I was getting 1385 one step closer, so this is a great project. I know you've been working on it, and it's a much-needed project.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, people contact me about it all the time, as I know they do. Next is fourteen E, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the town of Prosper, Texas, for the purpose of engineering right-of-way utility, relocations, and construction of Gee Road, and as a six-lane divided urban roadway between US 380 and FM 1385, with the county agreeing to contribute $1,700,000 toward satisfactory completion of the project, with funding to come from Gee Road, the Judge Trip 22, auto line, 8975539030.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen F, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the city of Oak Point, Texas, for the purpose of engineering required to rehabilitate Nayla Road from Maritop Row to North Corinthians Yacht Club, with the county agreeing to contribute $500,000 toward. with the county agreeing to contribute five hundred thousand towards satisfactory completion of the project. And upon issuance of additional funds agreement will be modified at a later date to include a total county commitment of two million five hundred fifty thousand with funding in the amount of five hundred thousand to come from Nayla Road Precinct one, Trip twenty-two, auto line I'm eight nine seven four three three nine zero two zero, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen G, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreements, ICA, between Denton County, Texas and the city of Pilot Point, for collection of special assessments levied by the following entities. Number one, Mobley one A one. This is the Public Improvement District. Number two, Mobley, um, I think it's IA. Number two, Public Improvement District. Three, Mobley MIA, Public Improvement District. Number four, Creekview Zone A one A one, Public Improvement District. And five, Creekview Zone B one A, number one, Public Improvement District. And six, Creekview Zone A, remainder area Public Improvement District.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen H, approval inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and Rocky Top Ranch Municipal Utility District for Advilorm Tax Collection, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen I. And that is approval of the inter-local cooperation agreements between Denton County, Texas and the town of Lakewood Village for the collection of special assessments levied by the following entities. One, Lakewood Village Public Improvement District, and two, Lakewood Village ONM Public Improvement District.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen J, approval of the contract for service between Denton County, Texas and Contractor Compliance and Monitoring Incorporated for labor compliance with federal wage requirements for designated federal-funded facilities and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go to number seventeen, which is community updates. This is low, this is local updates from members of Commissioners' Court.
Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Williams.
I think it's very important, again, with this heat, uh, that we really pay attention of, of checking on the elderly and our family members that may be living by themselves. And then another thing is, obviously, your pets. Uh, please make sure you think about your pets, the dogs, the cats, the horses, the cattle, whatever you may have. They too can sub, you know, can come to, uh, um, a bad ending with this heat as well. So please make sure you're thinking of those things. Thank you, Judge.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Falconer.
Yes, thank you, Judge. A couple of things here in the next week. The Colony is having their fun in the sun. Meet the Minions. That's today, so you gotta hurry over there. Meet the Minions, eleven to two, at, at Grandscape. Watermelon Fest, August fifth, from two to eight. And, and Carrollton, Carrollton's got game on for adults, uh, August second, and that's at the Josie Ranch Library. And then we got a lot of back-to-school happening in the next week or two.
A lot.
And so I'm excited to see that. I'm sure the teachers are all super excited, um, as well as the kids. But we have a back-to-school bling in Carrollton on August third, from three to five. And Corinth has Corinth Unleashed, the Bark Park Grand Opening. So they've got their dog park opening August fifth in the morning. And Crossroads has Crossroads Summer Market on the fifth, from eight to eleven at Crossroads Park. Frisco has a Friday Night Summer Movie Series on the, at the fourth. And, um, on the fifth, in the evening, they have the back-to-school Ice Cream Social and School Supply Drive, and that's at the Monument Realty PGA District. And that's all I've got.
Perfect, great. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
In addition to, um, Commissioner Falconer, Corinth has unleashed Ballpark Grand Opening on the fifth. And if you still need fresh vegetables, uh, Flower Mound every Sunday, ten AM, the Lakeside Music Series in Flower Mound, August the fourth, at Lakeside, live music in an outdoor setting. And one of the things that have really become important in Denton County and all over is the pickleball. There's a Louisville Pickleball tournament, August eleventh through August the twelfth at the St. Uh, Memorial United Methodist Church. Uh, we also have, I don't, no, I don't do pickleball. Coffee with the mayor in Holland Village, August the seventh. And Lake Dallas is having trade days, the fifth, the twelfth, the nineteenth, and twenty-sixth. Louisville Layla, August first through the eighth. Uh, North Central Texas Region Broadband Public Meetings, August the second. First Friday's in Louisville, this Friday, August the fourth. Uh, also the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee in Louisville, a public meeting on August the seventh. And the Food Blessing Backpacks on August the fifth in Louisville at LISD. And also at, uh, LISD Delaya Back-to-School Drive at one PM on Friday. So we're having, as they said, we're having a lot of back-to-school items, so please help out. We are still needing help in our community. Our citizens are still needing help, needing help, so please help wherever you can.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Edmondson.
Actually, uh, we only have one thing that is listed, and that's the Argyle Eagle Back, Back-to-School Event. As Commissioner Mitchell said, many, many school districts are having these kind of functions, and this is the only one that we know of here in my precinct. However, I'd like to mention something else. Commissioner Williams, you talked about the heat. Well, many of our people that I know of are going to an air-conditioned theater in order to see an absolutely wonderful movie that I'm going to recommend to all of you now. It's called The Sounds of Freedom, and it deals with human trafficking. It's a true story. It is so well-done, and our friend, Bob Williams, who runs Ranch Hand Rescue and is about to open a second campus in Precinct Four, said, don't walk to this movie, run to go see this movie. So I'd like to give a free shout-out to that. I think we can all become even more aware of this awful scourge on our country, and it happens right here in Denton County, among other places.
Perfect, great, thank you. All right. I will not provide comments. I think y'all did a really great list today, so. I, I was scratching them off on my list as y'all were mentioning them. All right, let's go back to our executive session for today. Fifteen A is the Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, personnel matters of affecting the county advisory body. Close meeting to liberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a member of an advisory body to with the tax increment reinvestment zone number two. This is also known as a Speedway TIF. Any appropriate action? Item fifteen B, Texas Government Code five five one zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Close meeting to liberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect regarding commercial financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the county government seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of a governmental body located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four, and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. And fifteen C, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property. This is a close meeting to liberate the purchase, lease, or value of real property located in Denton County Commissioners' Precinct three and Precinct four, when deliberation and open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. And it is nine fifty-four, and we are executive session. Thank you.